November 9th, meeting of the common council order at 7:00, a little after 7:00. We have a special guest tonight, this I think is every scout in Noblesville. And they're going to help lead us, if everyone can stand up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
And the flag is right up here.
So somebody just start, ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But they can sit down, now they can sit down?
Sit down, you're welcome to watch government at work.
Do you know what trip numbers they are?
Which trip numbers are you guys, all of them?
101.
101?
All of them.
Yeah. Ms. Cummins, could you call the roll?
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Sparks.
Present.
Ms. Wilds. Mr. Peterson.
Okay, thank you scouts, but you're gonna have to keep it down, thank you. So do we have a quorum, I wasn't...
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
To approve the minutes.
Okay, sorry. Motion to approve the minutes of our October 22nd meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of our October 22nd meeting, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. 9-0.
Mr. President, I would move that we amend the agenda for this evening and postpone resolutions RC 65-21, RC 66-21, RC 67-21, and RC 68-21 to our next regular meeting.
And everything else?
And everything else will stay the same.
Second.
There's a motion to amend the agenda, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. 9-0.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
There's a motion to amend the agenda, and a second, there's a hand vote again, all those in favor raise your right hand. 9-0. Petitions by, or comments by citizens who are present, there's some white cards out front, I have none in front of me, but, thank you, we'll move on to council committee reports. Rhodes Committee.
The Rhodes Committee met on November 5th, Brian Air, myself were present. We had a recap on a few high-level items, 146 street lighting is moving forward. They received the bids for existing light removal, and they will begin in early '22. Street rehabilitation, one of note, the Brick Alley repair between 9th and 10th Street, happened just recently, I drove by it on my way here, it looks really, really nice, and again, that's a partnership with the Preservation Alliance that is really gonna add to that area of downtown. We talked about State Road 32 and 38 roundabouts, and the roundabout at State Road 32 and River Road. River Road will be closed, a section of that in January for storm sewer and water main installation. The engineering department assured all of us that they are in constant contact with our first responders and River View Hospital to make sure that traffic, that does not impede hospital traffic. And then, one thing of note, the Nickel Plate Trail, the engineering department will be moving forward on a grant application for that, anyone who lives, I think it's within 1,200 feet of that trail will be receiving a letter. So just, that is of note, and should be going through to DNR December of 2021. I think those are all the high-level notes that I have.
Any questions for Rhodes Committee?
None.
Parks Board.
Yes, Parks Board met last night, November 8th, pretty quick meeting, they did order and approve a quote for the cold storage building, so that's going to be happening pretty soon. They did also talk about golf fees, there was just a slight increase, but they worked pretty hard on keeping it minimal, I think it was a dollar, for the fees. Lot of stuff going on, they're keeping pretty busy, Christmas is right around the corner, a lot of focus is gonna be put on Federal Hill, and they're gonna add even more additional lights, so it'll look even better than it did last year. Skate rink they're hoping to have, it's getting put together right now, but it should be ready to go for the November 20th opening. There's also a few more events coming, Deck the Hall at City Hall, November 19th through the 23rd, and a little bit further into December, Lights Over Seminary Park, and holidays, at December 4th, holiday at the Hill, Winter Market, also is at Federal Hill Commons. So that a pretty quick meeting, and that was about it.
Any questions for Parks? None. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President, we met November 4th, Darren Peterson, Megan Wilds, and myself. Mr. Higher discussed bond authorization amendment for Village at Federal Hill. Andrew Murray discussed an economic development agreement and economic revitalization area designation for Equator Properties LLC. Chuck Haberman discussed an economic development agreement and economic revitalization area designation for wood turnings, and also Tecton Towel and Supply. And Mr. Spalding discussed the 2020 audit rap. And the claims do come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, any questions for the Finance Committee?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Thank you. And I would just secondly jump right over you, Commissioner Jensen, if you'd like to say a few words.
Based on my body mass, you did not jump over me, Mr. President, but thank you for that visual. Great to be with you all tonight, I apologize, I'm the one that kept the meeting late, I was, I can't tell you, anytime I get a chance to talk to the next generation of middle leaders in our community, it's just so exciting. We talked from, everything from energy policy, which stopped me a few times, but energy policy, to toilet flushage on the east side, to roundabouts, and everything in between. So, thank you to Stuart Hilbert, and a lot of those scout leaders that made this tonight possible, and thank you guys for allowing them to come in front of you tonight, and it was exciting. I was telling them that the council sometimes gets a little nervous when there's this many people in the chamber, usually you think you've done something wrong, but tonight, it's quite the opposite, really. I rise, we're through really two points that I just would like to talk about quickly tonight. On Thursday is Veterans Day, and you may know that Noblesville is home to over 2,000 veterans, and we're excited to honor them and thank them this week, but something I wanted to point out, we've focused the last year and a half on mental health in our community, and this past Monday, we had an opportunity, along with Kristen Boyce, to highlight veteran mental health. And that's a huge area of focus and need for any mental health professional, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank our new Assistant Director of Economic Development, Chuck Haberman, who himself is a Marine. I twisted his arm and asked him to join me on that livestream on Facebook, and he reluctantly agreed to do so, and I can tell you, anyone in the community, if you had a minute to go back and watch that episode on Monday, it was incredibly impactful, Chuck shared a lot about what veterans in our community face, whether they face that well post their time in service, or up into being called up into service. It was, he was very transparent and very open about that, and I just really, well above the job description of which I've asked him to serve within the city of Noblesville, so I really appreciate that. He also gave me a proclamation that will be dedicated, obviously, to Veterans Day on Thursday, but one area that he is very passionate about, I'll read it to you, but since 2005, the rate of suicide in Hamilton County among veterans was 32 per 100,000, compared to 17.2 per 100,000 non-veterans. But between March and June of 2021, eight veterans died by suicide in Hamilton County, a 400% increase over previous years. And I, again, not to bring down the House in terms of that stat, but it's one that our administration has, we've been open and honest about tough issues in our community, and it's something that we're gonna focus on in the coming years around mental health and around veterans, I know Chuck is incredibly passionate about that. So I wanted to share that, I think it's important that our elected leaders are aware of some statistics that we're facing. One of the questions that the young folks asked me earlier were some of the difficulties that we face as elected leaders, and I talked about those that, in our community, that are less fortunate, that are struggling, that we all see every day, and that we probably take for granted what we have in our community at times, but, so that's one statistic I wanted to point out to you guys, I think it's really important for us to know and be aware of. Second item I would like to point out, if you are on your smartphone tonight, or have your computer up, if you'll go to thecityofnoblesville.org, you will see a brand-new website that has been launched just today. It's exciting, it's aimed at being more user-friendly, more transparent, with more information, we're always seeking to engage the public, I know I'm preaching to the choir in regards to that, but always looking for new ways, I think you'll find some new features on there. Kudos to Emily Gaylord and Robert Harrington, who worked tirelessly to get this done. I had no idea what went into a whole new website redesign and launch, they did it with a very, very minimal budget in mind, and aimed at just completely upping our transparency to the public, so kudos to them. Hope you'll visit that tonight, cityofnoblesville.org. With that, I'll wrap up, and happy to answer any questions that you all have. Mark Boyce.
So the future drivers of Noblesville, do they like roundabouts or not?
You know, I mentioned it, there was no, usually you get like a grimace or a grin, it was pretty flat-lined. We quickly pivoted to Tesla, which, so we were in a whole different realm of future generations here, Mark. And who knows what they will be driving, or how they'll be driving,
Absolutely.
by the time they get their license, which I also hear they're delaying later on in life, so, exciting times to come and watch, but, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, will City Hall be closed on Thursday?
City Hall will be closed on Thursday in honor of Veterans Day, but there is a ceremony at 11:11 a.m. in conjunction with county government on the Courthouse Square, and all are welcome to attend and join. And I thank, I know I joined the council on thanking all those who have served. Thank you very much.
Moving on to miscellaneous number one. Council to hear semi-annual report from Nickel Plate Arts, Aletha McGill.
Thank you, council members, very glad to be here this evening, thanks for your attention. Hello scouts, glad you guys are here as well, and I also want to give a shout-out to my new colleague Kate Baker of Noblesville Main Street, who we're really excited to be working with, and who's already making huge impact for us around downtown. So, as you all know, Nickel Plate Arts is on contract with the city to manage arts and culture projects. We are the direct link with the Indiana Arts Commission, which has a statewide cultural district program, of which Noblesville has one cultural district now out of 12 throughout the whole state, and so I just want to share some of our successes this year. Just as a reminder, arts production in the US contributes more to the economy than transportation, tourism, and agriculture, and so that's why it's so important that we continue to invest in it and grow the creative economy here. We want to make sure that we're benefiting from that contribution as much as anyone else in the country. And according to Americans for the Arts, they have a calculator that we use, we, Nickel Plate Arts, generated more than $430,000 in household income in 2020. We supported 22 full-time equivalent jobs, and we generated more than $25,000 of income for local governments through tax revenue. We work with over 1,000 artists every year, we have a network who subscribe to our newsletters and participate with us. They're from all over central Indiana, but concentrated within Hamilton County. We have over 7,100 visitors to our campus last year, both Nickel Plate Arts campus and our Noble Maid gift shop combined, which for a pandemic year is pretty darn good. And we had over 83,000 online participants in our programming, which we ramped up severely for 2020 to make up for the fact that we couldn't always be open. We sold over $22,000 worth of art last year, which was a drop of about 47% over the previous year, but still not zero for a year where our, most of our outlets were closed, and artists were finding other sources for their, to sell their products. And then we also provided over $58,000 worth of either cash or in-kind support to other organizations throughout the county, so we really are an economic driver. I just wanted to show you some things that we know about the impact of the pandemic, so if you look at this chart, this is at Noble Maid, our gift shop on the square, which features all items made by local, actually Noblesville artists are celebrating Noblesville culture. We, the orange lines are 2019, and the, or sorry, 2020, and the green lines are this year, 2021. So you can see, you can see the very marked dip in our sales last year during the shutdown, and you can see that we've really leveled out, Noble Maid has more of kind of a average sales from month to month, it doesn't fluctuate nearly as much as our other outlets because we have this consistent product line. But we've already jumped back up to $11,000 worth of sales so far this year, and November and December are of course gonna be our biggest retail months of the year. Similarly, just to compare the numbers to Nickel Plate Arts, our campus sales fluctuate much more based on what programming we have, what artists we have, and what exhibits we have on site. But again, you can see, we've very much recovered from the drop last year, the blue lines are this year. So I just want to give you, make sure you understand a little bit about our expenses. Our overall budget is at about $450,000, give or take, depending on the year. And over half of that is staffing expenses, it's, we really need high-quality trained staff to be able to get things done that we need to do, which includes everything from running Noble Maid to putting to exhibit together, marketing, fundraising, all those kinds of things. And then our next biggest areas of expense are the contracted services that we bring in, which is also helping us get our job done, as well as running our Noblesville campus here, and putting, and working with our artists. That light blue slice at the top, the $28,160, that's the money we give back to artists for the art that they sell. And these are our 2020 numbers. So of those staffing numbers, I just wanted to share with you that 49.4% of our staffing hours so far this year have been devoted to Noblesville projects, so this pie chart is all of the Noblesville hours that we've spent. The vast majority of them have been at Noble Maid, because we have staff there so consistently. And then the rest of our time is really focused on supporting and promoting and activating the cultural district, as well as our campus at 107 South 8th Street. We also partner with the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce, because we know that all of our small, or all of our artists are also small business owners, and so that connection with the chamber is really important. We share a marketing staff member with them, and, but then we also participate in other projects and planning with them as well, to make sure that we're really doing what we can to grow our local creative economy. So, in addition to what's on this chart, we've also put over 800 hours into just marketing in general, and the vast majority of that is focusing on telling the story of what's going on in downtown Noblesville. So this is just a chart to show you how we've been growing our investment in other organizations. So this includes marketing support that we've given them, ad buys we've given them, as well as grants, times that we hire them to put on programming within the cultural district, so you can see we consistently grow that from year to year. Our visitation numbers, again, this shows the dip due to the pandemic, so in 2020, we had a significant dip in our visitation, but still really strong numbers. These are bodies that came to our campus or to Noble Maid, and we expect that to continue to go up this year. Similarly, this really shows the dip in sales, art sales, but we are already well past this number for 2021, and we hope, I expect it to take two or three years to get us back up to that $48,000 sales in art from our locations, but we're well on our way back to that number. So, we also, it's important to note that we pay artists for what they do, just because what they do is fun doesn't mean that they're not professionals who don't, you know, who shouldn't be paid for what they're doing. So, last year, even with the dip in our programming and having our locations closed during, due to the shutdown, we still paid over $30,000, almost $31,000 to artists in our community to teach classes, to provide programming, to play music, we even did a lot of online concerts last year to keep that going. And so I just want to give you a quick rundown of the programs that we put on. All of these programs are designed to highlight aspects of our cultural district, help employ those artists, put them front and center, help get people to fall in love with Noblesville and invest here as much as they can. So for Valentine's Day, we couldn't do our normal program, which is, we cram everybody into our tiny little houses and have them do art projects together as couples, so instead, we put packages together of takeout date night kits so that you could do the artwork at home, and we... you could do the artwork at home. And we sold 38 of these kits. Having never done it before, we thought that was a pretty good number. I think the average cost was close to $75 for these kits. And there were more than 10 local businesses and organizations represented in there, too. They included holiday cards and CDs and other things that, to highlight and tell the story. Ninth Street Bistro contributed desserts that were awesome and like the highlight of the package, for sure. So we brought in over $3,000. Our goal was exactly $3,000, and we brought in $3,001. So it was a big success. We also had two weeks' worth of social media features for all those participants, all those partners in this project. So overall, we felt like we were able to really continue to tell Noblesville's story, even during a really tough time. This year, we're looking ahead, and we will probably do a blending of some in-person experiences and some takeout options, since that was such a hit this past year. Ferryville is by far our most popular Noblesville event, I believe. We had a record-breaking year this year. Everyone was really eager to get back out in the spring. So we had 30 houses in our Ferry House contest. We had 20 different locations in downtown that participated with us. And there was a little bit of rain, and we still had, well, we still estimate we had about 3,000 people total over the four days in downtown Noblesville. So really fun. Again, we're starting to talk about what that'll look like for 2022. Maker Fair was also a huge success, and it is a program that we want to invest much more deeply in, in 2022. Maker Fair is our event that features emerging artists, so people who are early in their career, or makers who are a little more on the like tech and craft side of things than on the fine art side of things. We do this in conjunction with the St. Michael's Strawberry Festival. So it's always the day before Father's Day on the Courthouse Square. And this year, despite concerns about the pandemic and safety and things like that, we still had more than 40 artisans sign up. We had, we even started a waiting list. We have really strong attendance for the whole weekend. Our estimate is that we generated $30,000 in commerce on the square between all the strawberry shortcakes sold, all the art that was sold, other commerce just on the interior of the square. We have not been able to calculate what that translated to local merchants, but we know that the money was there. So it was a great day to make sales. We also included a Juneteenth event as part of that. This happened to fall on Juneteenth. And so we saw a lot of diversity. The diverse side of our community really came out to support this. And we're looking at ways to expand that, to minimize any confrontation, really maximize inclusion during this event. And we're starting to talk to the chamber and some other area partners like Conner Prairie to do even more to highlight entrepreneurs and include some hands-on maker activities throughout this event, too. So again, this will, we've already committed to the day before Father's Day in 2022. We also had two events on August 7. Art Fair on the Square is our longstanding event that's run by Hamilton County Artists Association. It is the most important event of the year for arts patrons, so those people who look to Noblesville to come and collect art. A lot of people save up each year just to buy their big piece of art at Art Fair on the Square. So it's really for established, high-end, fine artists. They also had over 40 vendors. They completely filled the square. It was a really successful day. And it was in conjunction with the brand-new Logan Street Front Porch Music Festival, which was run by a resident, Jason Pearson, who's also a business owner here. We were their fiscal agent to help kind of keep them on track and keep them, you know, following best practices as they managed that event. I believe they had seven porches for concerts. They don't have an attendance estimate, but I know they are already committed to doing that again this year, maybe with a little, you know, a little longer runway for planning, which will make it even more fun and allow us to get more people involved. We also just celebrated Day of the Dead, which is a traditional Mexican holiday. It was on November 1. It was an afternoon. We did not necessarily expect that to be an overwhelmingly attended event, but we had over 100 guests, and there was a lot of Spanish spoken in the building, which was fabulous. We had four artists who were on display during that, two of whom are native Spanish speakers. And we got a lot of promotional support for that from the Noblesville Diversity Coalition. And what's behind the picture there is including the schools. They sent great messages out to the schools for us. So some high school teachers gave extra credit for attendance, and then lots of middle and elementary school students were encouraged to come and do crafts with us. So it was a really fun day. And then our last signature event of the year is Small Business Saturday and kind of the holidays in aggregate. We are very much partnering with Noblesville Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce on this. We've been planning it all together for months. The primary events for the holidays all seem to be landing kind of between November 27 and December 4. A lot of the parks programs kickoff before that, and then we know there will be some receptions and special events after the 4th, but that's really the concentrated week. And so Small Business Saturday on the 27th is going to include live music that is paid for through our cultural district money. Hamilton County Artists Association is going to do a pop-up shop. Jeff Davis is going to bring his mobile Victorian letterpress out, and everyone can make their own card that day, which will be really fun. We've been really working on promotion. We're going to, if the weather allows, we'll do some chalk art out on the sidewalks to help remind people all the different places they can go to shop. We're working on really promoting the Levinson Parking Garage and hoping to do little prize giveaways for folks. Some random folks who park in the Levinson should be able to win prizes on Small Business Saturday. Main Street's going to run gift wrapping. They're going to run a window contest as well, and then the whole event will end with the lighting of the square run by the chamber at 6:00 p.m. And we will continue to work on promoting local products, local businesses, local opportunities through the end of holiday break on January 8. So just as a reminder, our current mission is that we cultivate arts resources to enrich the lives of those who experience our community. And I bring this up because we are about to enter our 10th year. And so there are a lot of really fun things on the horizon for us. With our 10th anniversary, we are really looking at our branding, making sure that we are doing the best to communicate how cool Noblesville is and to really represent the Noblesville Cultural District well. So that may mean a rebrand is coming. And part of that is because we're also very excited about looking forward to the Ready Grant proposal that the city has put forward and being a partner in that process. When and if that grant proposal comes through, we are ready to go all-in on being the city's partner on the entertainment hub that is proposed in that project. Meanwhile, we've got three other grant projects that are in the works with the city. One is the R-Town Grant that was focused on alley activation. We've gotten an extension on that through March 2022. And so we've got an East Alley Shade structure, a couple of archway elements, one of which is not actually an archway but is inspired by archways. We've got water mitigation sculpture and another mural that all are funded through that project, that we're working with the Downtown District Committee to figure out the next steps on all of those. We also have an active project proposal in with the National Endowment for the Arts, which would bring a mural fest to downtown Noblesville. So we're waiting to hear the results of that, which should be in February. And then we're also looking, or we're also finishing out an Indiana Arts Commission Cultural District grant, where we're creating a video with the help of 12 Stars Media, again, to help tell the story downtown. We can use that in social media really to spread the word and convince people that they need to both come and visit and then settle here and start their creative business. So looking ahead to '22, we are, we have a new updated strategy for marketing cultural district events with all of our different cultural district partners. So we're looking forward to implementing that. We also want to look at the Noblesville Arts Council Committees and their roles to maximize engagement while also not overburdening anybody. We really need to incubate some new local leadership in some arts projects and arts facets. So that's going to be a key piece that we work on. We're still planning on implementing six signature events next year, and we're very much looking forward to collaborating with Main Street in new and exciting ways. We want to integrate Janus more into the opportunities we have downtown. Not only do they have a new director, but their entrepreneurial efforts are really impressive and really help show off our artist community in a whole different way. We have some funding to reintroduce professional development opportunities for artists, including a new partnership with Arts Midwest, which really helps elevate Noblesville into a city that can be looked at on a national scale. Arts Midwest is very interested in us potentially being a test site for some of their ideas, which is beyond cool because they have literally nine states to choose from. And then we, we are going to be the hosts for the Indiana Arts Commission's On Ramp Program in 2022, and this is by far the biggest feather in my cap at the moment. That will bring 30 creative entrepreneurs from all over the state to downtown Noblesville for a three-day workshop. So they will eat in our restaurants, they will shop in our stores, they will hear from our artists and get great advice on how to keep their businesses going. We will hold a reception one of the nights of that program, and I would love to have all of you there to meet those entrepreneurs and show off how cool we really are. And then I'm going to continue working with Arts Midwest on these ideas to use us as a test city and to showcase what we're doing. So I believe that's it. This is the list of upcoming things, cultural district-wise in downtown Noblesville. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? That's it? That's all you got?
Would you like more? Because I could...
Don't start.
I know. Yeah.
We have a long agenda.
Thank you.
I just would like to comment that this just shows that if, you can't find something to do in Noblesville with Nickelplate Arts, with all their activities, Main Street, Noblesville Chamber, Noblesville Parks, there's so much going on. There's a lot to do. Most of it's free, and it's kids and adults fun, so.
Yeah, it's true.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Awesome. We hope to see you soon. I'm going to figure out how to disconnect and some...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ailey.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Greg.
On to new ordinances for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance 741121 and ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 low-density, single-family residential to R2.
You skipped the salary ordinance.
73 salary ordinance.
That's because...
It's the difference.
We're going to blame that one for this one, so. All right, counsel to...
She's not here, she's blaming.
I know. That's why we're blaming her. Counsel to consider, counsel to consider ordinance 731121, ordinance seven, salary ordinance for elected officials for the city of Noblesville for 2022. Mr. Light.
Thank you, President Peterson, and members of council, Matt Light, deputy mayor, standing in for Ms. Leese this evening. In front of you for consideration is the annual salary ordinance for elected officials, which by statute has to be adopted separate from the salary ordinance for employees. It's a pretty straightforward proposal. The only change from last year's ordinance is to include the same cost-of-living adjustment that's already been approved for employees compared to the 2021 adopted budget. As you know, the elected officials in Noblesville did not participate in the bonuses that were given using American Rescue Plan dollars so that those could be driven to employees performing essential services, also didn't participate in the mid-year adjustment that was given in August, and will also not be receiving the targeted increases that are part of the first-person compensation analysis that's wrapping up. But again, just the cost of the living increase is all that's included in this proposal.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? See you in two weeks. Now, counsel, I've read this already. Counsel to consider ordinance 741121 and ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 low-density, single-family residential to R2 low-to-moderate density, single-family residential for approximately 19 acres adjacent to the northwest intersection of East 191st Street and Little Chicago Road.
Motion to introduce.
Denise Ashelman, Caitlin Doffler.
This is not Caitlin, so.
Christian Rector, Caitlin Doffler.
So just real quickly, this item was filed in August. It's been heard by the Architecture Review Board and the Plan Commission. The approximately 19-acre site is located at the northwest corner of 191st and Little Chicago. It is currently zoned R1. Their proposal is to change the base zone district to R2 and add a plan development overlay to the project. This would be a low-maintenance community. It is located directly across the street from the currently developing Schaefer Woods. It would be, Schaefer Woods is right here. And as this is a low-maintenance community, they provide services like snowplowing and things like that, but they also prohibit things such as basketball hoops, playgrounds, and trampolines to promote the empty nester target and market. The petitioner is requesting approval of the preliminary development plan and includes the alteration of several bulk standards. They're included in the Plan Commission packet. Here's the UDO standard. Here's the proposal for the development. The project was reviewed by the Architecture Review Board, and it did receive approval of the written standards for the homes. One of the discussions during that meeting was to make sure that there were architectural enhancements to the rears of the homes that do face the major arterial and collector roads that surround the project. So the lots here and here will include architectural features that match the primary facade requirement, so three-corner breaks, three materials, the things you've come to expect from the previous projects recently. And the, there is an exhibit included in the PD ordinance that actually marks those lots as requiring additional standards. This was seen by the Plan Commission at their October meeting. It was forwarded to you with a positive, I'm sorry, favorable recommendation to adopt 7.0.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Air. Mr. Air.
It's kind of a minute issue, but are we still using the "of Noblesville" on the entry signs?
Yes, it's a, it's a requirement. I'll be honest, I can't see that well enough to try to figure out if it says "of Noblesville."
Maybe it doesn't, but you can figure that out.
It's part of the requirements in the sign code.
And that's the only entry enhancement to the property, isn't it?
I will let, it appears that way, but I will let them address if there's something else.
Any other questions for staff? Petitioner would like to speak.
Thank you. It's good to be back. I think I was here about two months ago when we introduced this project. I have a presentation if you would like me to go through it, but I think most of the questions were just addressed. I believe the two concerns when I was here last time were the entry sign, which this shows the upgraded sign with the masonry as opposed to the more craftsman wood feature we had on the last one. We looked at Schaefer Woods and some of the surrounding, and I think this fit more. I will certainly make sure we get the "of Noblesville" added to that. We also...
Real quick, could you state your name and address?
My name is Christian Rector. I'm the vice president of land acquisition for Arbor Homes and Silverthorne Homes. I live at 5869 Belchamp Drive, Noblesville, Indiana. So the other discussion we had was the lots facing the perimeter streets. And as was mentioned, when we went through ARB, we committed a meeting what is required in your UDO on those lots. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Forty-four lots total, right?
Correct. 19 acres, 44 lots.
The property that abuts the development to the, I guess it'd be the east, I don't know what those property owners, I don't know if we even approached them. Looks like the stubs, the street stubs on the east side, but I don't know if they had any inclination and wanted to sell or what the status of that is. I'm just curious.
Did you talk to them? I don't believe we have had discussions with them. We sent out neighborhood notices. We had a neighborhood meeting with everybody that attended.
Mr. O'Connor, I actually talked to the property owner. He is an out-of-state owner. He noticed the stub street after I explained it's part of the protocol in our ordinance that it, we stubbed two adjacent streets, and obviously that property would develop its five to 10 acres, somewhere in there. This stub street's kind of an asset to them that gives them an alternate way out. He, I talked to him several times. I never actually got a remonstrance in writing or any comments in writing from him. I just talked to him on the phone. I just talked to him on the phone.
Okay. No, thank you for that.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance seventy-five-eleven-twenty-one and ordinance for. What's that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was doing. I thought, change of zoning from R2 low to moderate-density, single-family residential to R2 PD residential plan development and the adoption of a preliminary development plan and ordinance for forty-five, single-family residences on approximately nineteen acres adjacent to the northwest intersection of East 191st Street and Little Chicago Road.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Denise Ashelman.
Good as an hour.
Instead, we, I have a question, though. It did say, is it forty-four houses or forty-five?
Forty-four.
Forty-four for fifty-seven.
So their PD ordinance does say up to forty-five homes, but their current site plan only has forty-four, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Council to consider ordinance seventy-six-eleven-twenty-one and ordinance to amend oh-five-oh-one-nineteen as amended to include one additional ground sign for property at eleven zero-nine-zero East 141st Street. Hundred-and-forty-sixth Street.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
Good evening. This property is located adjacent to the northeast intersection of 146th Street and Promised Road. It is part of the campus center plan development that was adopted back in 2019. As you may recall, that planned development included basically office uses, industrial-type uses, or commercial uses. Leo's Market and Eatery was the first business to locate in that planned development, and Leo's is now requesting a second ground sign to be located on their property. That ground sign would include the price of a regular gasoline per gallon. The site plan here does show the location of the proposed sign. It is currently a landscaped area. It is adjacent to their eastern property line. The sign would basically be the same sign that is located on Promised Road. The exception to that is it will not say campus center development on it. There is eventually a proposal for, I'm going to say, two additional designation signs that would identify the businesses that come forward to develop in that area. And those designation signs would allow for the campus center development of Noblesville to be placed on those. This did come to you from the Plan Commission with a recommendation for adoption with a seven-zero vote. Brian Tuie, attorney representing Leo's, is present this evening regarding this ordinance. Should you have any questions of him?
Any questions for staff? I guess I was surprised we don't have an ordinance that allows two ground signs on a corner lot anyway, but I guess we're solving that now. Any other questions for staff?
Just one, Mr. President. Joey's saying if you go back, I've been by there several times, and I'm trying to orient myself. The other, there's a sign on the west corner, correct?
Yeah, it's basically in this area here.
But it is set back. So if you're driving along 146th Street and you don't turn onto Promised Road, you don't see a sign of how much gas.
Those signs have to be a minimum of ten feet behind the right-of-way, which that one is, the leading edge of that sign.
Go ahead.
Any other questions? Mr. Tuie, would you like to add anything?
Came all the way.
Came all this way.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for hearing our case. My name is Brian Tuie. My address is 50 South Marine Inn. And since not only Joyce Ann, but your esteemed counsel, Mr. Howard, suggested I be very brief, I will be very brief. And thank you for your favorable consideration of our case. We had no remonstrance, and the question was right on point. Going on 146th Street, you can't tell how much the gas costs. And we kept getting emails from customers saying, "We love your store, but what's the gas going to cost there?" And there were several that we showed the Plan Commission. That's why we respectfully request the amendment of the zoning ordinance, and thank you for your hearing our case.
Any questions?
To be brief.
I tried to follow the leadership of my elders.
You've just seated about five minutes to Mr. Howard, so he'll come back to us. Any other questions? If there are none, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Council to consider ordinance seventy-seven-eleven-twenty-one and ordinance for a change of zoning from R2 low to moderate-density, single-family residential and RMH Residential Mobile Home Park to R5 multifamily residential and PV planned business with the FH flood hazard district remaining as is for approximately forty-eight acres in the seventy-three to seventy-seven-hundred block of East 146th Street north side.
Moved to introduce.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
Second.
Are we going to, do we need to hear this one, or do we just send it back to the Plan Commission?
So, Mr. President, I would move that we return to the Plan Commission ordinance seventy-seven-dash-eleven-dash-twenty-one and request either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation and then to be returned with the partnering plan development ordinance. That is my motion for tonight.
Second.
There is a motion to return ordinance seventy-seven-eleven-twenty-one to the Plan Commission for a recommendation in a second. This is a roll call vote. Hand vote, it'd be a hand vote. This is a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it goes back to Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Smith. Council to consider ordinance seventy-eight-eleven-twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance forty-one-oh-five-twenty-one authorizing the issuance of developer purchase bonds for Federal Hill mixed-use project.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Howard.
This ordinance brings us hopefully very close to the wrapping up of the Federal Hill project. Mr. Moffett is here to answer any questions, but with all due respect to him, with prices and commodities and other issues what they are, I think the city needs to thank him for hanging in there and trying to move forward. This ordinance increases the amount of the developer-backed bond from fifty-two-hundred, I'm sorry, fifty-six-hundred dollars to five.
Five million?
Six million dollars to seven-point-two. I've spent too much time on this project.
You got your extra five minutes.
Yeah, we got it extra in there. The reason for this is that if you recall, there are two financings here, one for the garage project, which is about, went from nine million to ten million. And this allows the developer-backed bond, which has, where the developer is the guarantor to the bond purchaser, to be increased. The reason for that increase is that the developer is expanding what was originally Phase One. The original Phase One was on the east side of Nixon Street. They're looking forward to moving forward on the west side contemporaneously, right in following this. In addition, there will be additional square footage in place to generate more tax increment. Because there's more tax increment, then the bond can be increased, and it is projected by Mr. Treed, our financial advisor, that there will be more than enough increment to cover this increase, debt service on this increased amount. If there isn't, the developer is the risk partner on the deal. So this, we believe, is the last step before you in this project. We have a scheduled closing at, on November thirtieth, hallelujah, Mr. Moffett. And with this, I believe this will be your last approval, other than the updated zoning for the project, which is coming up later in your agenda. We have a lot of things to do, the professional team, to get going, and unless there's an objection, we would appreciate passing this on first reading and allowing us to move forward and spend our time elsewhere in closing this very important project for the city. And I'll stop and answer any questions. Mr. Moffett's here if there are any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Howard or Mr. Moffett?
Mr. President, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance seventy-eight-dash-eleven-dash-twenty-one on first reading.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules for eighty, seventy-eight-eleven-twenty-one and vote on this on the first reading. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine-oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance seventy-eight-dash-eleven-dash-twenty-one as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance seventy-eight-eleven-twenty-one and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Spartz.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine-zero. Mr. President, your ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, council.
Council to consider ordinance seventy-nine-eleven-twenty-one and ordinance amending ordinance thirty-four-oh-five-twenty-one for the Village at Federal Hill for property bounded by Logan Street, Nixon Street, Westfield Road, and John Street.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
This, this particular piece of property contains approximately two acres and is bounded by Logan Street, Nixon Street, Westfield Road, and John Street. As you may recall, earlier this year, we adopted an ordinance for the Village at Federal Hill. This particular site is the area of an existing restaurant and had another restaurant that has since been demolished. An amendment to the adopted overall development for the Village at Federal Hill would include this additional two acres. As you may recall, this project did contain a parking garage and multifamily units, and eventually will have some commercial and office uses. With that, I will ask if you have any questions. This was a sample, this is, just to reiterate, this was an architectural elevation of the total project. This being the site of the internal parking garage with apartments around it, this being the, an office area, this would have commercial on the ground floor, and this being some additional multifamily.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Moffett drove all this way, so welcome.
Good evening. Justin Moffett, on behalf of Old Town Companies. I'm going to plug in real quick, if this works, and just show you some updated renderings.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Denise is our tech support.
But you could stay in that view because, go back to the other view, they'd lose the video feed if we go to presenter mode. Oh, I don't know what happened.
Well, I will just talk. I have some really pretty pictures. It's the same project.
Status for council. It's a beautiful photo. Where's that taken?
In Hawaii.
Outside of your house, Mike. Oh, man, close, Mr. Harrington.
Sorry, apologize. You didn't want to see my vacation photos. Justin Moffett with Old Town Companies. Appreciate your patience. Denise did a good job of, or Joyce Ann, excuse me, did a great job of kind of giving you a summary of where we're at. Same project that you saw previously. We're adding in the Phase Two site now. We're prepared to close financing package that encompasses the entire site. When we were in front of you earlier this year, we did not yet have a consent from the other property owner. It's all been resolved now, so able to move that forward. And just, again, high-level summary here, we have the two phases. It's the garage rack project immediately adjacent to Federal Hill, then the Phase Two building to the west, just east of the Blue Sky headquarters. And again, we noted there's this commercial office space on the State Road 32 front edge. We've been encouraged that there's been some interest in that building, and so hoping that we can land an anchor tenant to add some daytime jobs to the neighborhood in 2022. Really, this is what I wanted to show you. We've gotten some updated images. I'm embarrassed that, when we were here previously, you'd had kind of 2D flat renderings, and I just wanted to show you kind of the level of investment we're planning to make here as far as kind of quality of the architecture here. You know, as we look at other Class A development around Hamilton County, this is as high-quality as we're seeing in the county and as high-quality as anything Old Town's working on currently. So proud that we're prepared to deliver this for Noblesville and hope it's something that you're impressed with and excited to have in your downtown. Just kind of a bird's-eye view here, again, a rendered view of what the finished product would look like, looking southeast towards the downtown area. So kind of the night view here, showing the farmer's market in the foreground, I think is kind of the best rendering we've seen to date or been able to share with you. So just wanted to update you and express our gratitude for the partnership. I know it's been a long time coming, predates Mayor Jensen's tenure here, and he inherited this project, and his team has done a great job shepherding it and getting us to this point. So as Mr. Howard suggested, we have had quite a ride with commodities this last year, and we're optimistic that we're kind of right in the zone here where we can get to a closing here before the new calendar year. So thank you for your patience with us and look forward to the partnership moving this forward.
I was asked recently about the farmer's market going away, so I appreciate that you've now rendered it into your renderings to preserve that and work with the communities. Thank you.
It's an important part of the community that we want to be part of, so thank you.
Thank you.
She appreciates that the farmer's market's being shown right there.
Any other questions?
Just one, Mr. President. Groundbreaking is planned to be when?
We are wanting to make sure we do it simultaneous with.
The bond closing?
Our financing, so obviously wouldn't be a good steward of the city's resources building the garage, so don't want to get ahead of things. We have really shot drawings on the garage. That's pretty healthy lead time, so we took the lead on getting that started. So we would expect early first quarter, might start mobilizing some site work before the end of the year, but definitely first quarter, early, probably January.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions? See you in two weeks.
Appreciate your time.
Council to consider resolution RC sixty-one-twenty-one, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Equicor Properties LLC, southwest corner of 146th Street and Oleo Road. Andrew Murray.
It's a project.
Greetings. Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director. For the record, before you, this evening for consideration is resolution sixty-one-dash-twenty-one that would approve an economic development agreement with Equicor. Equicor is a real estate development company based out of Carmel, and they are proposing to develop new-spec industrial space in the Saxtony corporate campus. With us tonight, Equicor is represented by Mr. Greg Small, along with their site incentive consultant, Mr. Chad Sweeney with Genovis. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. But to quickly orient. This is 45 acres proposed to be developed. As you will recall, the city, at the guidance and leadership of this council, invested in significant infrastructure improvements to this area. That investment included the extension of sanitary sewer, significant road infrastructure, including a roundabout at this intersection, as well as the relocation of a legal drain, which ultimately maximizes the developable acreage to this site. So, here we are with a project that shows immediate return on that investment, with a project and a partner willing to commit $42.5 million to this site and to construct and develop 500,000 square feet, again, of flex industrial space to this piece of real estate. This project tells us that investors, site selectors, real estate professionals are bullish about the expansion of industry in Noblesville and the state of Indiana. As this council is aware, we have success stories of new spec development in this area that have been leased immediately with quality employers like Helmer Scientific, Kurium Pharma, Nexpine, to name a few, and that is the expectation in continuation of that trend going forward with this project before you this evening. Lastly, from a department's perspective, we continue to see business leads, RFP opportunities for existing space, but more importantly, we continue to miss opportunities on those, you know, RFPs because we simply don't have any space in this area. So, having new product come online over the next three years will, you know, prepare us in our proactive approach to business attraction and be able to respond to those leads accordingly. Turning your attention to the screen. So, you got two structures that'll accomplish that 500,000 square feet with the internal truck bays and docks being screened by the building facade, as well as extensive landscape around the perimeter. From an architectural standpoint, there was healthy dialogue back and forth between the city and the developer to ensure that we had a quality development and quality product, specifically, you know, from a viewpoint from the public rights away in 146th Street and Oleo Road. We're certainly grateful to our partner in acknowledging and accommodating our requests. Some of the enhancements that you'll note include a variety of building materials, including significant glass, basingary to go along with the concrete panels, you know, parapet walls to break up the flat roof line, a variety of colors, bump outs, recessions, and then, you know, one of the, you know, most important components, we ask that our partner prepare a main entry feature that is at the midpoint of the facade facing Oleo Road, as shown on your screen. So, again, we appreciate, you know, the cooperation from our partner, and we feel very good about the design of this product. So, what's our role in this partnership in consideration of the project, of the investment, of the jobs, of the wages that'll result from this? We are going to incentivize the project with a nine-year declining real property tax abatement, starting at 90% and declining in 10% increments over a nine-year period. This does include the 5% tax savings payment back to the city. Procedurally speaking, if all goes according to plan, we'll work through the obligations of this agreement with the developer, which includes the tax abatement approval, the development plan, construction plan, and permit procurement with the plan to close on the real estate in March and start construction spring of next year for Building One. So, with that, I'll conclude my thoughts. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from this council's committee, Finance Committee. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-61-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion approved, resolution RC 61-21 and a second. This is a hand vote. Halls in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Council to consider resolution RC 62-21, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Equicor Properties LLC, Lot X, Saxony Corporate Campus. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, President Peterson, members of council. Again, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. Like your previous item, this is a second economic development agreement that we would enter into with Equicor to develop a new spec industrial building in Saxony Corporate Campus. Turning your attention to quickly orient you, the subject site of development is seven and a half acres, what is located on Lot X, and it's located off of Spurlin Court, as you'll know in the exhibit on your screen. But similar to the last item that we just discussed, this is a project that is 115,000 square foot spec industrial building with a total investment of $7.5 million. So, with this project and our previously discussed project, we have a partner that's willing to commit $50 million to our community and construct over 600,000 square feet of spec industrial space that'll allow us to attract quality employers to Noblesville. With the site plan, pretty straightforward. Truck docks will be facing to the west with parking for employees and consumers to the north and to the east. Architecture, again, is on the same level of quality as the previously discussed item. So, again, our role in this partnership, you know, in consideration, the investments, the jobs, the wages, the project, we will offer a five-year real property tax abatement, starting at 80% for the first two years. Year three would be a 60% deduction. Year four would be a 40% deduction, and then year five would be the 20% deduction, again, with a 5% annual tax savings fee paid back to the city. Procedurally speaking, again, if all goes to plan tonight, we'll work with the developer on fulfilling these obligations in the agreement. Happy to answer any questions. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from this council's Finance Committee.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
This is probably outside the purview of what we're looking at, but I'll ask anyway. Joyce Anne or Denise, from a signage perspective, on the 500,000 square footer in this building, but we're, how many signs are permitted by, I mean, it's, I'm just curious, because you're gonna have multiple tenants, and so, it's got, I'm just, I just gotta know, I gotta ask.
Okay. So, here's what I'm gonna say.
All right, well, I ask.
So, one of these buildings is in what we consider the Saxony Corporate Campus area. The other one is not, so there are actually different regulations. I think signage-wise, basically, overall, each tenant would be allowed a sign. You know what that square footage is, because there are different, you know, I can't tell you right off the top of my head. Also, there could be an item that they could possibly have, you know, a ground sign to identify those businesses, if there are four or five businesses. If you've ever been along Bergen Boulevard, you see those small ground signs that identify the users that are in that building.
Hyalong sign or a monument sign permitted?
Well, that's why I said a ground sign. Maybe permitted, there are certain cases. I would guess in both of these cases, you could have a ground sign that would identify the tenants that are in that building.
But the one we're currently looking at, you could put about any sign you want up, and no one's gonna see it.
By the way.
Just because it's almost a landmark piece of property. It's at the very end of a court, called a court that's got big buildings all the way around it. So, I mean, they'll have, it'll be a Google map to get to it for most people.
Well, or this may be one of those where we may have to go back, and I'm gonna say, you know, try to amend a different ordinance to allow them to have a sign in a location that can be seen from, you know, one of the redways instead of way back on the property. Although, this piece of property does front 146th Street.
Doesn't go all the way.
Yes, reported, doesn't it go all the way to 146th?
No, it doesn't go all the way. Well, that's not what's outlined on the, on that list. It's behind, it's to the south of Sleepy Bear Campground.
Oh, yeah, I forget about my little Sleepy Bear Campground there. How could I? Because Mr. Watson does come in to see me periodically. So, yeah, they would be allowed a ground sign. It's like you said, I'm not sure where it's most beneficial, you know, putting it at the end of Spurlin Court there probably doesn't do a whole lot for it.
Right. I mean, it'll be a warehouse project that trucks don't know how to get to it.
Yeah, thanks, Joyce Anne. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I had to ask.
Well, you won't call me up here now.
Do we get to hear from the developer? And they came all the way here, so I guess they moved too quickly.
Mr. President, members of the council, Chad Sweeney with Genovis, Naimus Will Drive, Fishers, Indiana. We served as an advisor to Equicor on this project, and as Andrew mentioned, Greg Small, CEO of the company's here as well. So, you know, we'd like to thank the mayor and the staff, especially Andrew and Sarah. As Andrew mentioned, we've been working with them for about three months through a very collaborative process to come up with, I think, a project that strikes a really nice balance between, you know, a project that's very viable and marketable, but also one that I think is well-suited to attracting the types of employers that Noblesville's trying to attract, and also aesthetically, you know, presents a good transition to other non-industrial uses planned for some of these areas. So, our firm primarily works with companies that are looking to relocate and expand their businesses, a lot of life sciences companies we've worked with, with Nexpine, for example, on Bergen Boulevard and others here in Noblesville, and I think there's a tremendous amount of momentum in the community, you know, from a workforce perspective, from a quality of life, from a connectivity standpoint. Heard a lot about this evening, just with a beautiful development that was presented and the arts and other entertainment options that are going on. And I think this is just kind of one more piece of that puzzle to attracting those employers, and that's providing, you know, high-quality space that's really in short supply today in a lot of markets. So, we very much appreciate your consideration, and Gregor, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. So, thank you.
I appreciate the quality of the architecture. I mean, they're tucked in, and this use doesn't always get a lot of architectural attention, and I appreciate that it's there. We have an approximate date that these buildings might break ground and be finished, assuming anyone can find concrete and...
Yeah, I think the answer is soon as possible. You know, we projected June 30th of next year, you know, sooner if, you know, materials are available and work through the process that Andrew outlined, it needs to still occur on the development plan side, but hopefully next summer.
Break ground?
Yes, break ground.
Not open, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Small, do you currently own other warehouse projects or these type of projects in that area?
No, we're, we're, Mr. Ayer, I'm involved with another company that we've got over 60 million square feet nationally that we either have under construction or under development.
Do you have any currently in that area?
Not here in Noblesville. I'm working on a project in Beach Grove that I just got tenure tax abatement. That's about a 1.2 million square foot building. But we've done quite a bit of industrial in the past and with my partners. I've got one of my partners that's done almost 50 million square feet. So, we're very comfortable. Most of our partners are institutional players, which expect this type of quality, and we have worked very diligently with Andrew and the mayor's office to try to come up with something that was architecturally pleasing to the city, and it's been a, been probably more like 120 days. We've been working vigorously to get this done, because we want to get going. The only challenge you're gonna have, and you probably know this, is steel and obviously in the tilt wall construction. Those, because of construction costs are fluctuating so much nationally, we're having to reprice jobs about every 90 days, and it's crazy on the prices. So, that would be the only thing that would, that'd hold us back, but we're anxious to get moving as quickly as possible, because we don't make any money if we're just sitting here. We have to close, obviously, in the spring of next year.
Oh, we appreciate you coming to town.
It's been a while, but I have done a few projects here.
I know you have, that's why I was asking you. I know you've been here before, I just didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, we're excited about it. It's a great location, and I was telling Andrew, I love, I love Hamilton County in general, so you go across the country, you see other places, it's, Hamilton County's a special place.
Thank you.
Real quick, could you say your name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Greg Small, 650 East Carmel Drive, Carmel, Indiana, 46032.
Against you, but...
I know, sorry.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Connor.
I just had a comment. I will commend Andrew and certainly Greg for taking the time to get this right so that it'll be a compliment to the whole area, and it will set the stage for future development. So, the quality is first class, and it'll make a big difference, so...
Well, I know that...
Collaboration's important. It gets a little rocky from time to time, but...
True.
Got to the, got to the end game, so that's, that's good.
Well, the mayor and both Andrew did a really good job, so they represented the sitting room.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I would make a motion, we approve resolution RC 62-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion approved, resolution RC 62-21 and a second. This is a hand vote. Halls in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Thank you. Council to consider resolution RC 63-21, a declaratory resolution establishing an economic revitalization area, southwest corner of 146th Street and Oleo Road, and establishing a public hearing. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, council. This resolution for you, 63-21, which would designate the real estate at the southwest corner of Oleo and 146th Street, the 45 acres that we just previously discussed, but this is to designate that as an economic revitalization area for tax abatement purposes. As you will recall, this designation is the first step, along with holding a public hearing and ultimately approving a tax abatement pursuant to the agreement that this council just approved as part of your agenda. So, one item that I will bring to your attention, I did unfortunately make two Scrivener's airs on my end to this resolution, so my request to this council would be to approve the resolution as amended and set the public hearing for your next meeting on November 23rd, but, so everyone knows, here are my two airs to the resolution. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Yeah.
I would move that we approve RC 63-21 as, or we have to amend it first?
We have to amend it first, yeah.
I'll make the motion to amend RC 63-21. Yeah, well, put the amendment...
Second.
Their motion to amend resolution RC 63-21 as presented in a second. This is a hand vote. Halls in favor of amending? Nine oh.
President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
I move we approve RC 63-21 as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution RC 63-21 as amended in a second. This is a hand vote. Halls in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for the economic revitalization at our next regular meeting for this project.
Second.
The motion to establish a public hearing for an economic revitalization area at the next regular meeting in a second. This is also a hand vote. Halls in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Thank you. Got through that. I want to personally thank Evelyn Lee's for phonetically spelling declaratory. It's the first time I've said it right since I've been up here.
Declare...
She did it, I got it, so it's worked out. Council to consider resolution RC 64-21, a declaratory resolution establishing an economic revitalization area, Lot X, Saxony Corporate Campus, and establishing a public hearing. Andrew Murray.
Same process, same approval in designating the ERA. This is now for the seven and a half acre parcel off of Spurlin Court pursuant to the economic development agreement that this council just approved, and in addition, the same Scrivener's air as your last item, so if you would entertain the amendment and approve the resolution as amended and set the public hearing for your next regular scheduled meeting, I would appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move that we amend resolution RC-64-21.
Second.
Lieutenant.
I move that we amend Resolution RC-64-21.
Second.
Motion to amend Resolution RC 64-21 as presented in a second. This is a hand vote, all who are in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
We approve RC 64-21 as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC 64-21 as amended in a second. This is a hand vote, all who are in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for the economic revitalization area at our next regular meeting for this.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for the economic revitalization area at our next regular meeting. In a second, this is a hand vote, all who are in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Okay.
Thank you very much.
The rest of our agenda has been pushed, so are there any council comments?
I want to give kudos to the scouts that made it through all that.
Absolutely, I'm impressed.
You did better than some of us.
And our parents.
Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.